July, I'm sorry, June 4th, 2018. Republican City Council meeting is called. Called to order.
June 4th.
Everybody please stand for the pleasure of Lincoln.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please remain standing, but to ask Pastor Pope, please come and give us a prayer.
Devine God, we are here, we're asking your blessings upon these officials, oh Lord, as they discuss the issues that are germane, that are important to the people in which they govern. We ask you to bless each branch, each discussion, each topic, each citizen of this city, oh Lord. We ask you to guide, the leadership, that they will be mindful, judicious, thoughtful, compassionate in the decisions they make as it affect the people that they serve. We ask you to bless them and the citizenry of Inkster. In the name of Christ we do pray. Amen.
We'll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Whiteley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard. Here. Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We do, we have seven present and we do have a quorum.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Need to add anything, take anything off, ignore anything? Oh yeah. Let's come. That's next. Hey, Randy. Definitely ignoring that.
I'm in the wrong, I'm in the wrong.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Motion. Second. Okay. Probably move with the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes. Presentation, Senior Alliance Update. Tamara Kiebler, CEO of Senior Alliance. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Nolan and Clerk Rutledge, Treasurer Carrington, Mayor Pro Tem Williams and Councilmembers. My name is Tamara Kiger. I'm the newer CEO at the Senior Alliance. I've been there about 14 months. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about our agency. Once a year, we try to get out to visit each of the 34 communities that we work in and to report on the vital services we provide. Last year, your total match amount was $2,409 and that helped us provide services that you will see on the one-page report in your packet of information. So we provided services to 975 Inkster residents in fiscal year 2017. 412 were served by our Information and Assistance Center. So this center fields 40,000 calls a year and we link people to resources and help them put together a plan to age in place and stay safely in their homes. 237 were served in our in-home programs. So that includes the Medicaid My Choice Medicaid Waiver Program and that helps low-income seniors and adults with disabilities live in their homes versus a nursing home. We also had our nursing facility transition program, which helps qualified individuals move from a nursing home into their own homes. We have our care management and case coordination services for individuals who are over 60 to be able to have in-home services and live safely in their homes. Fifteen clients were served with our non-emergency transportation program totaling 43 rides. 226 were served through our nutrition program, most commonly known as Meals on Wheels. Our nutrition program is not only home-delivered meals, but we have congregate sites and liquid meals as well. So while we operate with a budget of almost $30 million, I'm pleased to tell you that only 4% of that is used for administration, which means 96% of the dollars we receive goes back directly into the communities where we work. Our audits are unqualified. We've had no findings, recommendations, or management letters for the last 10 years. So we thank you very much for your support. It's been longstanding and it helps us serve older adults and their caregivers and we work continually to inform the community. So if you know of anywhere that you would like us to attend and give more information, please reach out to us. My card is also in the packet. And so if you or anyone watching at home would like further information about the Senior Alliance and our programs, please call us by calling 800-815-1112 or emailing info@thesenioralliance.org. You can also visit our newly designed website at www.thesenioralliance.org. We have a Facebook page and a Twitter, which is AAA1C. So again, I thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you and update you this evening and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I have a question. Do you service like Southfield, Oakland County area?
No, we do not. That's a separate agency called Area Agency on Aging 1B.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing.
A public hearing of the City of Inkster Code of Ordinance, Ticket Specifications, Section 39.02.
Do you have a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Vote. They probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes. Who's giving us the details? Anybody?
Maybe City Attorney.
David, you have the information on this? About the tickets, will the language change, I believe?
Uh huh.
Yeah, well, somebody should have been there.
Yeah. Somebody. 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 Somebody.
Basically, this is the one where we're, I'm pulling up the council.
P2.
Where we're doing civil infractions and.
What we found is that there was some concern in the court with the code enforcement and the judge with the dissolution of the City Administrative Hearings Bureau. The code enforcement matters were all coming through the City of Inkster 22nd District Court as misdemeanor violations and there was some issues with many of the misdemeanor violations being written to people who no longer owned the property. People had warrants outstanding and it was creating a backlog and because they were all going through the 22nd District Court, we were faced with not having much flexibility with resolving tickets that were improperly written. So what this is, is we're amending the ordinance to give the code enforcement officers the flexibility of writing the first two violations as civil infractions. If the persons don't come in immediately upon the first two violations, it will arise to a misdemeanor. So this gives the court a little more flexibility, as well as the city employees a little more flexibility when violations are issued to the wrong persons. And the judge and the chief of police have endorsed, as well as the code enforcement officers, have strongly recommended it. So that's the effect of this proposed amendment.
Talk to them about the fee.
There's an escalating, I don't know the exact fee we agreed upon, but there's an escalating amount that the fees will increase. The first offense will be $100, the second offense will be $200, and the third offense will be, again punishable up to a misdemeanor, which is up to a maximum of $500. And accordingly, if you get a first or second offense, citizens should know that now they can actually, instead of having to waste a half a day or a day of work, they can just mail it in like a speeding ticket. Whereas before, all of them, one of the concerns is what that the citizens, when they would get notice of a violation, they would have to appear in court. They just couldn't pay a fine or call in and say, "I'll take care of it." Now, on the first or second offense, you can just mail in the appropriate fine without having to take time out of your day. The third offense will require a court appearance after the ordinance has been revised.
Since this is the public hearing, this is where we want to hear from you regarding the proposed changes. So anybody who wants to speak on it, you can have a comment, a question, say anything you'd like to say, just come up to the podium and let us know.
I really don't understand what you're all talking about. But does this mean that this is private property? That the homeowner?
Say your name so we can have a record.
Okay. My name is Ann Chapman. So does this mean that it's private property and these people that own this property, if the doors are kicked in or the windows are broken or whatever, if they don't fit, close these houses up?
Absolutely. As you know, in Inkster, we have a large contingency of renters and property owners who don't reside in the community. So code enforcement may go out on any given occasion. Let's say one of the tenants was moved out and the property is in disrepair, a gutter is hanging out, windows are broken.
Right.
The way it is now, they will issue a violation that's a misdemeanor and that homeowner has to come to court and they're subject to 90 days and/or $500 in court cost and fines. Now, we're giving the code enforcement an opportunity to write it as a civil infraction and that way, the owner can pay the fine, repair the property without having to come to court and create a backlog. A lot of times, these properties have changed hands and the infraction may be written to the prior owner. And then we have a warrant on the person who doesn't own the property anymore. So this just gives the city a little more flexibility, as well as a convenience for the property owner not to have to come to court if they have every intent on doing the right thing with the property.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
I could just talk to her all night, she just smile.
That was hard to be. Excuse me, I just wanted to know, is there gonna be a timeframe?
State your name, please.
Rochelle Wells.
You are well-known, though, but we.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, is there gonna be a timeframe between the time that the owner is cited and the time that the work should be done before maybe there would be a next citation or something like that? I mean, is that gonna be worded in to the ordinance?
No, it's not worded in the ordinance, I don't believe. But that is one of the concerns that we had addressed, is that we should allow at least 30 days for the property owners to address these concerns. And so code enforcement has agreed, once they get the first violation, that gives them 30 days to pay or come into the building department and address it.
So what about fixing the, whatever, the disrepair?
Usually, they have to come and get a, a lot of times, an inspection and then, once they've got an inspection, pay the appropriate fines, they have six months to complete the repairs.
I see. So there is a timeframe where they can have the work done?
Correct.
And before any other.
And that, that's the way it is now. But this just stops a person from being criminally liable or responsible on that first occasion.
I see. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is William Miller. I think it's a great idea. It adds some flexibility to the code, 'cause I've been caught up in one of those one time where I had a couple of, two or three properties at once and trying to get the city inspections fixed and ran out of time and I had to go down there and they, they was like, well, I showed them what I was doing. And I said, "When you gonna be done?" I said, "Four day." And they said, "Oh, okay, go." And they canceled it, but you know, it was, I appreciate the flexibility that this ordinance gives us now. It helps a lot. So, it's a good idea, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nathan Newsom. I'd like to know if this guy has anything to do with grass, cutting the grass too?
Yeah, I mean, you can get cited for that.
Back part.
Yes, you can get cited for grass.
I got a neighbor having cut his lawn all year and then cut it about one time last year and I went to the place, had them write him up. They said, "Put a note on the door." Went back the next time, they said, "We'll go back again." The man cut half his backyard and cut his front yard one, two time, the whole year. The grass is this high now, next door to me.
Did you call, have you called the code enforcement this year?
Well, my neighbor gone up there today, I think.
What's the address, you know?
1509 Kenwood Street.
Okay, we'll have somebody come over.
1509?
Yeah.
1509.
You got it?
The grass is this tall. My head is all up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close, oh.
Hold on. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Um, I'm trying to get this straight in my head. Okay, so I'll give you a scenario. Um, a landlord is cited twice for noxious weeds and then the next thing you know, he's being cited for blight. And then the next thing you know, he's being cited for something else. Is there a mechanism in place to make those, what you call habitual offenders or whatever?
Well, the maximum amount of exposure or liability a person can have in district court is just misdemeanors. So there, there is an escalating fines, but that's it. With regard to noxious weed and blight, we amended the ordinance several years ago to allow the city to go out and cut.
Right.
And bill and place it on the taxes. So if it's a continuing problem, city has the flexibility of doing that.
Because we know we have landlords who just don't, don't do anything.
Correct.
And they're cited over and over and over again. So.
Didn't somebody go to jail not too long ago?
Oh, yeah.
I thought so.
Can't remember his name. He was a frequent flyer, but he got, we, we referred him to the prosecutor's office for fraud and what he was doing to tenants and he, he got time in state penitentiary.
Good, very good.
Can we continue looking into that billing process? Because I have been asking about it. I know when I talked to Jenny Fields, when she was still here, she had stated that it was something on the books about it, but it hadn't been, I guess, too much enforced.
What's that?
So with the blight, for instance, if someone fails to cut their grass and the city goes out and cuts it, we're supposed to put on the taxes?
Well, I mean, the problem I had years ago was no one paid. You send them a bill for it.
Yeah, we had the administrative hearings bureau, they would come in and get judgments, but they would just never pay.
Right.
People would owe $20,000 and there's no enforcement mechanism and you were paying a lawyer to act as the hearings administrator officer, attorneys, code enforcement would be, this room would be filled up on an administrative hearing bureau day and it just had no teeth. But Judge Johnson has locked people up and there was a name that was mentioned today, a person had 17 properties in the City of Inkster and did nothing with them and she gave that person consecutive 90-day sentences. People respond when it's a criminal matter.
Anything else?
One question. Does this addresses the landlords who set out tenants or when they move out and, I mean, we have a...
We can't, we can't carry you.
Does this address the landlords that set out tenants? We had an ordinance that said they had to get a dumpster out there and we see a lot of things that's put on the curb, so does this address those landlords as well that don't get that dumpster?
Well, it does, but it's not necessarily a code enforcement matter. That's blight and our code enforcement is pretty, pretty adept at determining, you know, the, the property owners who are just leasing and not taking care of their properties and they have that discretion. They don't have to write a civil infraction. They can write it as a misdemeanor right away if they choose.
You say that's blight, but that, A is blight.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Did he just say that the ordinance, the ordinance officer can write a misdemeanor if they chose to?
That's correct.
Instead of giving them the first and the third step?
Correct. And, and what I'm saying, in cases that Councilman Williams is referring to, where you have a professional property owner setting people up, not following, there's an ordinance on the books now, the landlord has to bring a dumpster and it has to sit there for a certain amount of time. And the property owners, most of them who are professionals, they know the, they know the ordinance. And if they don't do that, I'm confident that our code enforcement officers will handle it appropriately.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moving to close the public hearing.
Support. They probably moved, support, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes. Consent agenda. Okay, it's been properly moved to adopt a consent agenda.
Support.
Probably supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes. Boards and commissions. Any nominations? Do we have any to vote on? No nominations? Okay. No previous business, first reading?
I'm sorry, first reading on the City of Inkster Code of Ordinance's Ticket Specifications, Section 3902.
That's just what we were just discussing. All right, new business.
Consideration and approval, authorizing administration to accept a quote from Adamo Group Inc. in the amount of $166,500 plus a 15% contingency of $24,975 for a total of $191,745 for repair work to perform on the sewer line behind the houses on Middle Belt between Andover and Pine Street. Approximately 300 feet of sewer will be replaced with a new 10-inch sanitary line. The inspection, the inspection fee for 27 days will be approximately $21,600 at $800 a day.
I move.
Support.
We probably move to support it, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes.
Consideration and approval of gym floor restoration project at Booker Dozier Recreation Complex.
Report. They probably moved to support it, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes.
Consideration and approval of a restroom restoration project at Westwood Park.
Support.
They probably moved, supported twice, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes.
Consideration and approval of a street closure on Notre Dame on June 9th, 2018 from 12 o'clock PM until 9 o'clock PM for a black party. The applicant is Peggy Moughton.
I move.
Support.
My name is Ann Chapman.
I live on Notre Dame Street and I'm here for Peggy Moughton.
Okay, thank you.
I just want y'all to know. You told me to come, so you're right here.
It's been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes.
Consider.
Thank you. Everyone.
Consideration and approval of a street closure on Lehigh on June 23rd from 2018 from 10 o'clock AM until 8 o'clock PM. The applicant is Elijah Pfizer.
No move.
Support.
They probably moved, support it, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes.
Item F, consideration and approval of a moratorium on any new car dealerships in the City of Inkster.
Move.
Support.
They probably moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes.
Item G, consideration and approval of a street closure for the Inkster Summer Fest on July 7th and 8th, 2018, from midnight July 6th, 2018 to 6:00 AM on July 9th, 2018.
No move.
Support.
They probably moved, support it, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. It passes. I'm sorry, I apologize, I forgot to recognize Jewel Jones, State Representative. If you have something to say, come on up. Tell us all the good news.
Good evening, mayor, council, administration, citizens. I guess any good news is a happy Monday again. So I'm glad to be here. We will be getting away from the Capitol pretty soon, in a couple of weeks after we wrap up the budget, so I will get a chance to come and hang out with you all a little bit more. On June 18th, we are having a public safety forum about the recreational complex from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. That is a council day, but it's gonna be a chance for some citizens to get a chance to get some updates from the fire department, the police department and some other organizations doing stuff in the area. Beyond that, right now, I do have a friend from Nigeria visiting. I don't know if this is the right time for him to, you know, say hello or something to y'all, but his name is Jamie. He's been doing some traveling around the states these last few weeks in New York and Maryland at John Hopkins. He's a leadership coach out there in Nigeria, so he's just hanging out for a second, but I have him here if he can come and say hi to you all right now or if.
Hey, Jamie.
You wanna say hello or anything? Really quickly, say a few words.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's my first time here. My name is Jamie Padjo from Nigeria and I will say that standing here today is such a pleasure. My grandma used to tell me that if I work hard, I will stand before kings and queens. And growing up, I never knew how that was gonna happen, but as I grew up, I began to expose myself to opportunities within my reach and one of those opportunities is me standing here today. I want to appreciate every one of you. My visit to the United States was intentional to expose myself to opportunity to meet more people, to connect with more people, because I have a lot of people, young people in Nigeria who look up to me as an inspiration. I was 10 years old when my father and my mom are from home and so I found myself on the street, hawking to survive and do a whole lot of things. But as, as I grew up, I realized that there is a better path I can design for myself and so that decision that I made at the age of 10, as a boy, is what has resulted to who I am today. But then in Nigeria, growing up as a child, life was very difficult, but one of the decisions I made to myself is that I'm gonna invest so much in myself so that I can become an inspiration to thousands of young people in Nigeria. As I speak to you right now, I have about half a million young people who look up to me every day for inspiration, both through social media and also through some of the programs that we do. And I want to appreciate you for this opportunity today to stand for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, that's it for me. Make sure we get on a vote August 7th for all the wonderful candidates that are running this year, so y'all take care. Happy Monday.
Thank you. Oh, no, no, no. Jerome, this is one of your questions.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening, Ms. Morgan.
Good evening.
The public. What I, I wanna know is what are you gonna do about the street floodings? Now, last month, my street was flooded on Hazelwood for four days. Sunday, it was flooded. It just cleared up today. And last year, someone told me that it was because of a pipe or something that was broke in the line. I wanna know when they gonna take care of that? Now, because we've been going through this the whole year.
It's, it's a major repair. That, that's why he's.
Oh, is that?
We have to fix it, there's no question, but.
I mean, every time it rains.
Oh, yeah, we know.
You know, it can just rain a little bit and then it's flooded.
Mm-hmm. It's broken.
So like, last month, it rained for four days, the whole street was flooded.
Right. Yeah, we're gonna figure out something. We're gonna pass the hat later tonight, so we'll get that fixed.
It happens a lot on neighborhood.
It's bad.
Our infrastructure is horrible.
Oh, it's bad. It's bad. All right. Officer Lebo.
All right, good evening, mayor, council, citizens. Few things. First off, I want to ask for your support of the Boy Scouts Summer Youth Activities in Inkster. This year, we're gonna have a day camp at St. Clement's Church from August 20th to the 25th. It's our third year offering the experience, which helps stimulate the mind and creates a general thirst for education, knowledge, and teaches and reinforces civic and community participation. We're having a fundraiser breakfast on Thursday, June 7th, this coming up Thursday, and we would like to invite everybody here to attend and make a donation towards scouting in Inkster. Short story, I had, came on as community relations. I got the position and not even a week later, Chief Riley says, "Lebo, you're going to camp." I'm like, "Okay, sure." It's a seven-day stay-away camp. It was such an amazing experience. These kids, we went with fourteen kids, we were there for seven days up in, um, uh, Manatee, Michigan. Had, these kids learned how to ride a horse, some learned how to go swimming, some climbed a rock wall for the first time. They're experiences they'll never forget. Last year, we fell slightly short of our funding, and we don't want this to happen again this year. Now, the resident camp at St. Clement's is a little bit cheaper and we're able to reach a lot more Inkster residents. So I urge you to please support us in this endeavor because it makes lasting experiences and things that kids talk about. Every time I see them, they say, "Lebo, we going to camp?" "Lebo, we going to camp." I wanna say yes. So please help us with this fundraising goal. Next, we have Coffee with the Cop. That is going to be Wednesday, June thirteenth at ten AM. It's going to be at Applewood Coney Island at two-eight-six-four-zero Michigan Avenue in Inkster. Hope you'll join us there for just a cup of coffee and some conversation. Last but not least, movie night at the police department. Yay! So excited, no idea. That is going to be this Friday, this Friday. June eighth at eight-thirty PM is when we'll start the movie, depends on how dark it gets. We're gonna be watching Coco, that was what won the popular vote on Facebook. I hope you will all join us for a free movie night with free popcorn, hot dogs, snow cones, and Detroit Scoops just signed on to sign up, give us some free ice cream as well. So please come and join us. Bring a chair if you can, because ours fill up really fast, and dress for the weather, it might be a little warm. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Akindelay akiminyemi. That was close.
Akindelay. Strange, you try to try to say my last name, we're gonna talk about that just a little bit. First of all, everybody, good evening?
Good evening.
Akindelay means the hero shall return home. And akinyemi means fated to be a warrior in the Yoruba language in Nigeria. So, my brother, welcome to Inkster. Don't go nowhere. We need you. My father gave me that name at birth because I'm the oldest of six siblings. I'm a warrior, I am. I don't believe in a poverty mentality. I reject poverty a hundred percent. I only accept prosperity, wealth, and total abundance. So therefore, I'm glad he's here because I wanna talk a little bit about immigrants when given the right tools, bring those qualities for a municipality like Inkster. For the record, we should be working on making Inkster an immigrant-friendly city because immigrants overall bring economics, decrease crime, raise the educational attainment, and median income of a community. It's imperative to link our wealth with those who live here and those who are from other parts of the world. And guess what? Speaking of immigration, perhaps this is the time to start looking into restructuring our library component in Inkster with online education, career technical education, skilled trades, and core partnerships that can expand citywide with people who live here and immigrants coming together as one to move the city forward. Guess what? That could become the engine that may become the new Inkster best educational district. Anchor not just by that library board, by our local and regional partnerships. And that BEST stands for Business Education, Science, and Technology, ladies and gentlemen. As we prepare to open our permanent location of the library, we hope that it'll be a twenty-first century digital hub of education and financial technology, creative space, and most importantly, career technical education that will prepare young entrepreneurs right here in the city of Inkster to grow our tax base, developing the city with the best educational district. An anchor with culture arts, STEM, and allied health, and microenterprises fueled by women empowerment can change the direction of the city and the region as one. Let's all work together as one, let's kill the negativity, and let's go. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Fuller and Ben Williams. Heat up.
Hello there. My name is Catherine Fuller.
My name is Benjamin Williams.
And we're here today from United Way for Southeastern Michigan. And for several years now, United Way has hosted a series of Meet Up and Eat Up Block Party events with several different communities across Southeast Michigan. And this year, we're very proud to announce that we will be hosting with the community of Inkster. So we're here this evening to invite the Council, Mr. Mayor, and the Inkster community to Dozier Recreation Center on Thursday, June twenty-eighth from three to six PM. While Benjamin and I are here actually speaking to the Council now, we actually represent a larger planning committee of community partners from Inkster, including the City of Inkster Parks and Recreation Department, Gleaners Community Food Bank, and Zaman International. I brought flyers this evening to share with you. And as you can see, this is going to be a major event. We'll have a variety of interactive activities for kids and adults, including a food giveaway with fresh produce and dry goods, free books for kids. There will be face painting, a DJ, free lunch for the whole family, a raffle with prizes. Our team will be here registering folks to vote. There will be games and activities and a live cooking demonstration as well. We really are really, really, really happy to be back in Inkster with you this summer and are really looking forward to continuing the community partnerships that we've built, especially over the years, but even so more recently. Benjamin here has had the great opportunity to participate in the Inkster Task Force with Councilwoman Mitchell and Mayor Nolan. And we've had a great, great, great time partnering with the rec department as well on this block party. And we're really looking forward to bringing this fun, interactive event to the Inkster community. Thank you.
Gabe Henderson.
What's happening, family? How's everybody doing up here?
Good, how are you?
Good to see my family, always, always good. Okay, what I would like to speak on, okay, a block club. I wanna thank the parks, recreation, you know, redeveloping, uh, Parkwood Park. We plan to do a Juneteenth celebration in the park. Did, uh, any of our members get in touch with you? I've been sort of distant, you know, for, about that.
We were just talking about it earlier tonight.
Oh, you did?
Received a date.
Oh, but-
That's all.
Someone talked about it earlier at the, uh, Orange, uh-
No, no, we waiting on you.
Waiting on me? I just come from, anyway. No, somebody's supposed to be here, I told her I might be here. I was up, you know, with my wife, you know. Uh, shoe, yeah. So, uh, we do plan to do that. And we wanna know if it's allowed to do that celebration in the park, Parkwood Park. That's a ma- major concern. And it should be the twenty-third. Yeah. That's of June. We couldn't get in it on the team pod, you know, so we're gonna be on the, the twenty-third, yeah. And so that's a, we suppose had another person here spoke on that. Suppose had all the information and all the correct dates and all that. And that's the Ten Commandments right there, and I can't use that for right now. But anyway, so that's my concern. Chief Hubbard, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit, okay? Well, yeah, but my, my Kenny said she still love you, she a hundred and three, she still love you, but she gonna have to get us up straight on that way anyway.
Sounds like a personal conversation.
But anyway, it was just on my mind, you know, yeah, and I talked with you and all that. So, uh, yeah, she'll be the twenty-third, uh-
Mr. Henderson, excuse me. Are you aware that there's another group planning a Juneteenth?
It was a young man here a couple of months ago, he was supposed to got back with me. I gave him my telephone number.
Oh, okay.
And I told him, you know, we had, did something, did he have give a date?
Sixteenth of June.
Oh, the sixteenth of June? Okay, so it-
We were hoping you could work together.
Well, we, I tried, I said, I gave him my telephone number and he was supposed to call back. And I wish I should've gotten hold of his number and, uh, and 'cause my president of a block club, she was in concern of that also. And I told her, yeah, I gave him my telephone number and, so anyway. A little confused lately. End of this, well, anyway. That's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
All right.
Willie Johnson. Help him up, Mr. Henderson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Member of Council. Reporters, officials, ladies and gentlemen. I've been missing you, times, you know, ups and downs these days. But, well, the Lord still blessed me to be here because I have a message for you all to hear. A lot of people not hearing. First thing I wanna mention is housing. Housing, they're building up every place but Inkster. I see one construction job going up in Inkster, okay? They're building all around us. Black people don't have no business, businesses very few. Once we had everything, a great city, we're going backwards. I'm telling you, we're going backwards. We need more schooling, education. I want, I'm warning you, everybody, keep your kids in school. President Trump ain't playing, now. I'm old enough to be, I've seen all the changes, okay? I'm probably the oldest World War II veteran in active in the city. I want to tell all the young people, pay your bills, help your parents, you're not helping your parents pay bills, taxes, and insurance on houses. You're letting the houses go back. That's where I came from. I'm telling you, like, white people own everything. And right now, you should laugh if you want them, but you think you're high in might, but it won't be long. Trump's gonna have everybody with a job. I'm telling you what I know, people are happier when they're working. So many people getting different aids, a lot of this stuff gonna be cut out. I won't mention a few. But when it's cut out, you're gonna work for those jobs. Now with me, I'm retired from Wayne County. I had my Blue Cross for years until I retired. After I retired, they cut out Blue Cross insurance for retirees. I have to pay almost five hundred dollars a month for Blue Cross insurance. But one thing I have, something else to tell you. Uh, I'm talking about the police department, that was my pet because I was an officer once myself and I was out there after midnight by myself. And I did a good job. I got letters to shock every one of you if you see what the sheriff himself say about me in writing. Also, the state police, I work for the state of Michigan too. Assistant Chief Fire and Safety Officer, you say-
Mr. Johnson.
I heard that before, you heard it before, but how many of you will make it?
Mr. Johnson.
I made it because I did my job.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
I know, Madam Clerk.
Okay, sir.
But I wanna say to everybody, Mr. Mayor, and you should be saying it too, and all black people, keep your kids in school. Trump won't, you're selling the houses out and people buying furnaces, they're begging to buy houses if they can get the money because God ain't making no more land. Right now, housing pretty reasonable in Inkster, housing gonna go up and you can't afford it, but you paying rent, you need an apartment, all that's gonna go up. And you can't pay that when you don't have a job. Everybody jumping my high money now, but by the end of the summer, lots of everybody here gonna be crying. Keep praying and keep on keeping on. Things are changing, Mr. Mayor. The whole planet is changing, the floods, the storms. I wrote about that twenty-some years ago, eat music and sing it. About storm, tornadoes, fire, kids are dying, people killing each other. I saw that twenty years ago. I have it on record, cassette, not cassette, but CD. Okay, so y'all better get yourself together. We don't have no business in Inkster, black business very little. And these other places are rubbing your eyeball out. They're real rich. I know because I have to check out their spirits.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Watch your gas, when you go buy gas, watch, check your gas tank before you go check your gas meter and check it out to fill up. Those people are messing with the tanks.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. I'm going. Thanks for the time, Mr. Mayor.
No problem.
Of course, I'm twice older than most of you guys.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
On May twenty-ninth, the Election Commission met and we have some polling location changes. Precinct four-two, which was formerly located at New Jerusalem Church on eight-twenty-one Inkster Road, will now be moved to American International Academy, which is located at two-seven-one-zero-zero Avondale. District one, precincts one and two, which used to vote at the Recreation Complex, will now vote at the Floyd B. Simmons Building, which is located at two-nine-one-five-zero Carlisle. All of the affected polling locations and districts will actually receive new voter registration cards and also a letter in the mail detailing your polling location change. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact the Clerk's Office at three-one-three-five-six-three-nine-seven-seven-zero. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Treasure.
No comments.
Okay. We're gonna start with Councilwoman Mitchell.
No comments.
Ooh, Councilman Oden.
Nothing to say.
Well, you can drive around and see some stuff.
I did, but I'm holding it. I got some, I'm holding it, it's gonna come.
I was getting worried for a minute, so. Councilwoman Wyler.
No comment.
Oh, man. Councilwoman Howard.
Well, okay, I do have one. Who handles, is it Adriana or Sade? Handles when a person buys property and not fixing it up? Who I call? I call? Because I know we give them some time, but-
If they pull a permit, it'd be the Building Department.
Building Department? Okay, okay, okay.
You can call, find out whether they pulled a permit and see where they're at. They get, they had so much time once they pulled a permit.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Councilman Chisum.
Just piggybacking on Officer Lebo's spiel with the Boy Scouts, I hope to see you all at the fundraiser this Thursday. I'll be there first thing in the morning. And just always remember, Wednesday night, seven PM, Ink Town Pedal Push, Inkster Park on John Daly, in between Avondale and Michigan Avenue. Thank you.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you. First, I would say thank you to Pastor Duckler for coming and giving us a prayer. My next item is, there's a group of citizens, senior citizens in the city who have been experiencing high water bills. These citizens are, I said they're senior citizens, they're basically in the house by themselves or with their spouse. But lately, their water business has been going up and up and up. They said they called to the city, they talked to the Water Department, and basically what they told them is, well, we'll come in and we'll get you on some type of payment plan. It needs to be that we need to go check out the, do these meters and see what's going on because these senior citizens know they don't have these leaks in their houses. They have come in, we need to go check out the meters and look at the problem and find out why they have these high water bills. And because every other week or so, I'm getting a phone call from somebody who's talking about high water bills. So we know we got something going with the meters, we need to look at that issue and take care of our senior citizens. On another note, for years, we've been talking about the airport and the noise of the planes going directly over our houses. Last week, the clerk and I, we happened to call the FCC and they came out to actually listen to the- FAA, thank you. FAA, they came by and they stood outside and they heard what we heard. But they gave us a song, dance as usual. They did their first study in nineteen ninety-seven. They told us ninety-seven, okay, eighty-three, okay? They said they did another one in two thousand and seven. Okay? Okay. The next one is going to be 2021. They showed us the plans. The plans are on how the flight plan, how they changed or whatever. It seems as though they're not going to make any changes because they says it's going to go to Congress, and we don't have a congressperson on hand at the moment. So we said we're going to make our own noise. Everyone, when a plane flying over your house, here's a number you can call to the Airport Authority to complain about the planes flying over your house. Because they fly over at 6 o'clock in the morning over my house. They fly over about 12 o'clock and 1 o'clock. And in the evenings, anywhere between 8 o'clock and midnight, there's a barrage of planes coming every five minutes. The number is area code 734-942-3222. They also have an email address, noise@wca.us. The email is noise, N-O-I-S-E, at wca.us. Back some time ago, I think when we did the first study, Councilperson Connie Mitchell, she was there. And they did mention her name, that she was there, and she was very thrilled reading all the information. And they said, well, she understood, I'm quite sure, well, I can't speak for her, but I would assume that she didn't, that she didn't go along with the plan. Because they said, well, everybody at the team, they accepted what was going on, and that was that.
Can I add?
How did you elaborate?
Yeah. The first noise study was done in 1983. Two employees of the City of Inkster at that time sat on the committee representing Inkster. It's my understanding that they did not do a good job of representation. And that is why, and it takes the government forever to do anything. You know that. That is why a lot of Inkster residents started yelling a few years ago when the City of Westland, which is right across the street from the City of Inkster, and all of that area in Westland, got what they called attenuations done to their homes. They put in soundproof windows, doors, new furnaces with central air, et cetera. The reason it happened with them was because we didn't stay at the table and make the demands that we needed to make. And we allowed the FAA to put only one sound machine, sound capturing machine, in the whole city of Inkster. So let's fast forward to when I sat on the committee. Now, a resident who represents the city does not have the right to vote. So at that time, our mayor was Mayor Hampton.
She laughed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Moving right along. By that time, which was shortly after I retired, it had to be 2005, I think it was. 2005, 2006. By that time, what had happened was the FAA had increased the number of, the level of decibels that they would consider injurious to a community. So let's say, for example, in 1983, the level might have been 60, but by the time I sat down, it had been moved to 80. Now, what they did do, they tried to put one sound capturing machine in the city, but I told them, no, you're going to put one on one end and the other one on the other end. So we did have two. But what actually happened was just what I said. By the time the second study was done, the decibel number had changed. So it was considered that we weren't really adversely affected by the noise. What the airport did try to do was change the air traffic pattern. Now, every morning at 5:00, they're flying over my house. And some days, they're so low, I just sit in the backyard and wave. But if we have an opportunity to be a part of that again, that's what we had to do. We had to be very vigilant at the table. We can't miss any meetings. We have to be, we have to speak up and demand that we get what we know we need to get. So that's the reason why the City of Inkster did not get the attenuation program because the FAA had moved the numbers. By the time someone sat at the table to make sure that we got what we deserved. So you say the next one will be 2021?
Yes.
So whoever is the representative from the City of Inkster needs to be schooled on the history. And I think I kept all my documents. A big, thick notebook like that needs to be schooled on what to do, how to react, what's going to happen, et cetera, et cetera. So when we sit at the table again, we're prepared. We don't have to be reactive. We can be proactive. So that's the history of the Airport Authority and how this noise study happened. Now, they have built some areas at the airport where they put planes to test them. You know, they used, did you ever hear revving up at night? It would be very loud. But they have built an area now at the airport where they actually put the planes in its blocks, huge concrete blocks, to try to hold down the noise. I still agree that it's a good idea to call. And the more calls we make, the more opportunity we may get to address the issue again, even sooner than 2021.
Because they sent four people out here to talk to the Clerk and I.
Mm-hmm.
So we got their attention. But we let them, we let them know that we're just not going to sit here and just wait till 2021 before we do something.
Right, absolutely. By 2021, who knows what we'll have flying over Inkster. So that's my history with it, and that's the prior history.
We need everyone's cooperation, call in as much as possible. Just keep calling in, email, keep calling in.
Yep.
My last thing, shopping store.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of things. I want to address a couple of community matters. The first one is, I think last Sunday, there was a Family Fun Day slash petition drive at the old skating rink at Safari. And I want to address some misinformation that was put out. Apparently, some of the residents were told that the mayor and the city was stopping or blocking this skating rink from opening up. And I just want to, I had the planner give me a little timeline on what has actually been happening. Just want to let you know, give you the actual information. In March of this year, March 12th, they filed their site plan. You know we have a process for you to open up a building that's been closed. The building's been closed for over 20 years. You have to basically have an architectural drawing, go through the planning process, go through the Building Department, and get okay to open because the city has to inspect, make sure the building's safe, you know, for people to go in the building. They filed their application March 12th. Our city planner went out and conducted a site visit, walked around the place, inside, outside. They had their development review team meeting on March 27th. That's when the Engineering Department, the Fire Chief, Police Chief, everybody comes together, the planner and the applicant, and they go over the site plans and tell them exactly what they need to do. The next day, the comments went out in writing of all the changes they need to make to their site plan. That was March 28th, 2018. We haven't received the revisions yet or anything from the applicant. Yet they're asking residents to sign a petition to help them to get the skating rink open. The only reason the skating rink is not open is because they haven't finished the process. There is a process for everything. They haven't pulled any permits. They did the renovations last summer without pulling permits. The purpose of pulling a permit is for us to go in, tell you what you have to do, and then, once you fix it, we go back and inspect it and make sure it's safe. They did not do that. So I just don't want people to think that, first of all, there's no one up here in this administration doesn't want the skating rink open. I see it as a positive thing for the community. But that is the information they're putting out right now. So I just wanted to address that in a public forum. The next thing is the Library Board. I was away last week at the Mackinac Policy Conference, representing our city with myself and the Treasurer. And we're up there trying to get some deals done, get some resources back to our community. And I knew that the Library Board had a public hearing last week. Hopefully, a lot of you came to discuss their future plans. It came to my attention that they, the Library Board went into closed session to discuss their next move of a temporary library, which, of course, we all support them getting back open. But, you know, because of the Open Meetings Act, you cannot go in closed session and talk about a lease agreement or where you want to move a building to. It's a violation of state law. And my concern was, as the mayor, of course, we opened up this building to the Library Board because they're crucial, crucial part of this city, always have been. So we let them have their meetings here since the building that they leased rented from us before had flooded. But I just want them to make sure that they're clear. I know the president has experience on Tifa Board, on DDA. We cannot go along with the law being broken. That's not what we're trying to do here. Just do everything the right way. I know some things are sensitive because we deal with it up here. There were four council people at the meeting. If you wasn't sure, you could ask any one of them. They would have told you yes or no. They would have told you whether you can go in a closed session or not. But I get why you did it, but we just can't do that. I feel the same way. We have to discuss certain things that are sensitive. But we have to because of the law. So we are going to try to do whatever we can to help you get this thing open. We're trying to work together. No one's opposed to the Library Board getting open. We just want it done right. And if we can assist, great. If you got it all, that's fine, too. We don't need additional work. But we just want to make sure that we're all aware of what's happening and we want to work together and do it the right way. We don't want to be in the news. Somebody called Channel 4, and they showed up. And that's what my concern was. We're doing, we're not doing things right. We got the news there. We need no negative attention from any of the media because we're getting a lot of positive attention right now. So that's all I wanted to say on that. Some positive, positive stuff. State budget. We're working with Ken Cole to try to get some money for the City of Inkster in the state budget. They will be ending the session in a couple of weeks. It's rough because it's political. We, our state representative is working hard, our state senator, but we're in the minority. And people hold grudges. So we asked them for a half million dollars to do some things in the city. They're going to make us chase this money for a while. So it may be the supplemental budget in the fall. We'll come back and ask again. It's just very, very, very political, but we are working on it. Just wanted to let you know. Memorial Day Parade. I hope everyone saw the Fox News coverage of Memorial Day Parade. It was excellent.
Yes.
Excellent. And I want to commend Sandra Wiley again for doing that hard work. It was one of the best, oh, it was, it was one of the best reports on Inkster, definitely Memorial Day Parade, that I've remembered seeing.
That's right.
It was thorough. Next thing, last Saturday, we had the 13th Congressional Debate at the Recreation Center. I want to give kudos to NAACP. Excellent, excellent forum, excellent debate. Learned a lot from all the candidates being side by side and being able to answer so you can compare answers. And we're looking forward to having a little town hall meeting. We're going to set the date. We'll send it out by email, post it on the Community Access Channel. I want us, as a community, to talk about the people we want to support and maybe come together and try to support, all come together and support one candidate. If we do that, we will have a lot of leverage with that person. And of course, we could hopefully push them across the finish line. And so when we call them, they pick up the phone because we supported who we thought was the best candidate. So if anybody's interested in doing that, we will be setting that up, and we'll get that information out through all the organizations in the community as well as the city's website. Let's see, we got... Ripping Cutting. This Thursday, June 7th, please join the Inkster Housing Commission Resident Council in a ripping cutting ceremony for the new IHC Envision Center. The ceremony will be at 4360 Hickory in Inkster, Michigan. Time is 1:30. We'd like for you all to come out and show unity in the community. Our Secretary of Housing, Ben Carson, will be coming. It's kind of a big deal. Not too many officials from national level come to the City of Inkster. Obviously, he went to junior high school here. So let's show him who we are by showing up and supporting the Housing Commission because we will be asking them for resources to help us help housing. So I'll be there, you know, hey, he's not going to have to be your favorite person, but we need to show up and let him know what we need from the government, okay? All right. I think that's all I have. Look forward to seeing you all in a couple of weeks. You have a motion to adjourn? What's your adjournment?
Support.
Been properly supported, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.